Excuse me, I'm first time. I want to say that I am very disappointed in the town of Webster for the actions that they have taken.
Cynthia, can you make sure you're talking into the microphone?
Is it that sensitive?
Yes.
I'm here.
I can hear you now?
You can hear it? Okay, I could be bad.
Can you also state your address for the record?
Sure, my name is Cynthia Doctor, my address is 774 Bell Harbor Trail here in the town. I want to say that I'm very disappointed in the way the town of Webster has handled the EMS situation in the town. One of my great concerns, and I don't know if any or all of you have had the occasion to require immediate ambulance service for a life-threatening situation, and I did a year ago November, such that I had asked to go to Strong Memorial because that's where my doctors are. They told me I couldn't make it to Strong Memorial, so they took me to Rochester. The type of care and concern that they gave me was unparalleled. I had had to call them the year before because of acute pancreatitis. Both times, they were wonderful. So when I started kind of through the back door finding out that the town of Webster somehow could not come to an agreement with the ambulance service, I was upset. I told all of my friends, they were equally as upset. And now I see we're to this point where tomorrow Penfield is going to be responsible for us. I believe that there has been a distinct lack of transparency and communication. These are two things that Mr. Flaherty likes to point out that are so important in the town and that people don't come to town board meetings, et cetera, et cetera. There's absolutely nothing on the town of Webster Facebook page regarding EMS situation, nothing. We like to talk about our brand highway department, which by the way, God knows how much that It's also mentioned by Mr. Flaherty, who for some reason is unwilling to look up what I'm speaking, that the Webster Herald is where information is posted. If you Google the Webster Herald at their website, it says it's not operational. Even if I wanted to subscribe to it, how would I? You're something on spectrum. What I would like to know, and I do not know if in this forum, anyone here will answer my questions. I'll ask that question. Will people here answer my questions or exist here? You can tell me whether you would answer if I asked you a question.
Cynthia, I'm gonna tell you this.
What?
Without knowing the question, I can't answer that. I can't answer if you're gonna, because I don't know if you're gonna ask me like, what are my wife like?
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
I cannot answer whether I would answer your question until I heard the question.
Okay, I'll specifically ask the question. You stated in your supervisor count that there were a number of points, bones of contention alcohol between you folks and the ambulance service. I'd like to know what those points of contention were, more than one word.
Yeah, I can answer that question. I just want you to know you're at four minutes and four seconds. So I'm gonna give you some slack here. Do you have another question?
No.
That's it?
Well, depending upon your answer.
You're gonna run out of time, because my answer doesn't count into your, it counts into your time. So I would like to...
Then I will go back to what I said when I came here, that I will make an appointment to talk with you sometime within the next two weeks to find out what example, because it was never published anywhere, that I could find. So how is a resident of this town, can I make a decision whether or not you folks are in the wrong or the ambulance company of us?
Okay.
I'll tell you.
And we're now five minutes.
That the ambulance company happily answered my questions.
Okay, so I, and I want to ask one question of you.
Is this my time or yours?
You don't have to answer this question. You said that the Webster Herald, you couldn't get a hold of it if you even wanted to, okay? But you said your supervisor corner, how did you see my supervisor's corner tally?
Because somewhere someone said you were losing touch on ambulance.
Okay, okay. That's all I need to know.
And I went to the town of Webster website to find very little information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to answer the question?
Well, yeah. With respect to, you know, notifying and also publicizing, I think you're up to fifteen or sixteen articles?
Fifteen.
Fifteen articles?
Oh, no, I realized.
Okay.
I saw that, because each one announces which...
Right.
I've read that. It still doesn't answer the question, what was the whole thing?
I believe that one of your, one of your articles certainly did identify a couple of the significant differences.
By the way, nobody can hear you now that you're off the podium, so it doesn't...
Well, you're talking to the fans.
Right. So Cynthia, I, you know, I understand the minute you walked in the door when I said hi to you, you know, there's nothing I can say that is gonna make you happy or whatever. I call it, Pat Stevens, our, I wish to bring it up, says, "You hate my face," and that's fine, but I'm just trying to be straight with you. If you speak from the crowd, that's not how this works. You speak from the podium, you had your five minutes, and now we're gonna answer your question, and it's a good question.
Thank you, that's what it is.
Wow, that's great, all right?
Did I understand you say that you were going to make an appointment with a supervisor to, to speak to him individually? That's great, because also understand that maybe I misunderstood.
I could be mistaken, I see what you're asking.
No, I'm not trying to be patronal, I'm just trying to be factual here, that I think it's a great idea for you to sit down with supervisor and also because of the fact that, if I understood you correctly, that you have already met with the EMS, correct?
I have talked.
That's great, so now you're gonna get both sides.
I agree.
Thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it.
Okay. So I think the fifteen articles over the last two years, and the reason why I always reference how many there are is for things just like this, that when somebody comes and says, "You've not been transparent, you haven't told us why," I feel pretty confident that we have been unbelievably transparent, and I think, and it's funny, this, she's shaking her head like this, "You haven't been," and Brian Boopin's back there like, "Holy cow." Is there anything more we could've said, Brian, except for go into people's doors and knock them on?
No, I mean, you guys published links.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a resident, I'm like a resident.
I would also point out the fact that we have had numerous discussions in these board meetings specifically regarding EMS.
Yes.
To, in, in, in those meetings or on our website.
So I just want to say this, because I think Cynthia deserves, Cynthia does not figure it out, that, that the podium is where the people in the crowd talk, and, and this is where we talk. So I'm gonna answer the question, okay?
Sure.
And she doesn't want one-word answers, so you get ready. You better time me on this one, I'll try to do it in five minutes or less, just like the time that you were given on the podium. In November of 2021, the town board did a resolution to what I call trump, the West Webster Fire District awarding the ambulance, EMS authorities they had, to Penfield Volunteer Ambulance, who Glenn Becker is in the room tonight from them. We did that because we thought, well, as a town board, we think differently than the West Webster Fire District leadership and the Northeast Joint Fire District leadership. Their meets and bounds of their district is what they need to think about pragmatically. We're the town board, we need to think of the full thirty-five square miles that encompass both of those districts. So we made a conscious decision that what was best for the town was not to split it in half and have Penfield Volunteer Ambulance making the calls on the west side of Harder Road and Neat Walls Northeast Quadrant Advanced Life Support under a contract with the town's municipal authorities, WEMS, Webster Emergency Medical Services. That would not have been a good play. We made that decision, and I gotta say, much to the chagrin of the West Webster Fire District leadership. So I gotta tell you something, Mrs. Doctor, if you're looking for more people that are in the Tom 38 Club, you should go down there. I hope that they maybe are not thinking that way, but they did not like me at that time, nor this board. That was the right decision. Now, when we made that decision, we stood on this podium that night in November of 21 and said, "I want to make this very clear. This is not us handing Neat Walls the whole town, and that's that. We are going to amend the current contract, because the current contract between WEMS, our municipal authority, certificate of need, which were the only town in Monroe County that has one. We just had a major change to that contract because Neat Walls now has all of West Webster. So we have to make changes to that contract. And Neat Walls leadership, all the way along with John Cahill, our EMS liaison and myself, from June to November of 21, said, "Of course we will make changes, of course we will make changes." And then when John Cahill and Patty, John Cahill and Patty Cataldi, our deputy supervisor and our town attorney, sat down in December of 21 and said, "Let's start talking about this amended contract." I don't know really if Neat Walls leadership was that much of an engaged participant in that. They had gotten us to award them the whole town without doing an amended contract. Now, we looked at this and said, "Okay, well, that was a risk we took, all right, on good faith." But it kind of got really trumped in about April of 2022, because we were under the assumption that if we gave Neat Walls all of West Webster, that we had figured out math, John, and it was about a net $250,000 to Neat Walls annually from us giving them that section of town. And that was theoretically going to take care of any financial problems they had. Well, the New Year's Day of 2022 celebration ended very quickly, because by April, Neat Walls had applied to the town for $450,000 of our ARPA money. Now, we weren't planning on giving any of our ARPA money to non-for-profits, so we had to figure out, well, this puts us in a very unusual position. We can't just glad-hand and give that to a non-for-profit when there's a ton of non-for-profits in the town of Webster that might want to have some of our ARPA money too. So we set up a situation where you can apply for our ARPA money, and I think fourteen different, is that right, Paul?
Fourteen times.
Fourteen applied for our ARPA money, and on July 7th, right? On July 7th, we awarded Neat Walls, on July 7th, 2022, $205,000 of our Neat Walls money. I'm sorry, of our ARPA money. Here we were, taking pictures on July 7th at the board meeting, they got $205,000. Now remember, six months earlier, we had just awarded them the whole town, which was supposed to pick them up $250,000 annually by having the whole town. But you can't make this stuff up, Cynthia. Three weeks later, on July 28, 2022, the Neat Walls leadership came up to that podium and said, "We need $800,000 in a tax district, an EMS tax district, and we need it by January 1st, 2023." That made this town board step back and say, "Wait a minute, hear me out, you asked for the answer, all right? Okay. We said, "We can't just cut $800,000 checks without figuring out a change to the contract and understanding how your business operates currently, so we're not just handing taxpayer money over to a private company that is not managing that money to the best interests of the taxpayers." And so that led John to a long game, seventeen-month due diligence process, and here is the money answer, somewhat overly simplified. During that seventeen months, from August of 2022 until Neat Walls leadership in December of 2023 decided, "We're gonna give you a ninety-day notice, town, we don't want to be your outsourced ambulance company anymore," all right? They did that on December 29, 2023. One thing that was consistent, and I kept saying it at this podium, writing articles, they wanted the money and they didn't want any changes to the contract, they didn't want any changes to their current organizational structure and how they operated, which they operated with a fly car, with a paramedic, and a transport ambulance with an EMT, and they meet at the site. Seventeen EMS agencies in Monroe County, and they're the only one that uses that as their core model. And they all, sure it does. And so they also, they also have leased staff in, they take their staff, their EMTs, their paramedics, basically, and they, and they have a, they're a private company. God bless them, they went out and got revenue from Williamson, New York, that's not Webster. They went out and got revenue from Richmond, New York, that's Honeywell Falls, South of there, not away. And basically, they reported in their QuickBooks, Paul, that they were, they were making money on these contracts, right?
Yeah.
Because they said, "We want this money from the town of Webster, because it really is to subsidize our paramedics pay and our EMT pay." Problem is, when you looked at the base, the details of their paramedics and their EMTs and who they had on staff and how many hours and how many were being dedicated to these contracts, I don't think there is any way you could describe this, that we would have Webster taxpayers subsidizing contracts in Richmond and ways.
Well, as part of the due diligence process, we showed the town's hat.
Right. So our point was very simple. We're not adverse to giving money. We're not adverse to the town board and town coffers, either general fund discretionary or setting up a tax district for EMS.
Which point happened, if you're right.
We're not adverse to giving money. What we're adverse to is throwing good money after bad. And so, because that is not why you elected us. Our biggest job as a town board member, in my opinion, is the fiduciary responsibility of your tax dollars. And we wouldn't be doing our job, it's a dereliction of duty, if we basically just kowtowed and handed $800,000 because, "You're not gonna like it, Cynthia, because, you know, they save lives and do this and that." You asked a question up there, "Has anybody ever had taken ambulance because they have their, have their life saved?" You're looking at one of them, right here. Guess what? Then we are aligned, aren't we? But you know what? Well, we both got our life saved by ambulance, we're aligned at least on that. Now, as time went on, it became very apparent, it's one of my favorite sayings, "Don't listen to what people say, watch what they do." They kept saying to John and me and Paul and Charlie and whatever, "Ah, we'll make changes to the contract, this and that," but their formal in-writing proposals to us was, "Give us forty-five grand a month, we're the best."
Sixteen.
No changes.
I thought it was sixteen.
It was May of 2023, they did a resolution and presented it to this town board, forty-five grand a month, no changes. And then, there was a resolution in May of 23. And then the other written thing was essentially from their attorney in November of 23 that said, "You give us $210,000 by December 8th, or we're going to file with the state that we're going out of business." Those are the only two formal things in writing we ever got from them. So they could tell you stories until the cows come home of what they said they were gonna do, but the only formal things they gave us was money for nothing, for no changes. And that was always a non-starter with this board. That was a non-starter with this board. We were very clear about this. And I think the narrative became, for anybody that does social media, is that this was somehow a personal thing between me and Ahmed Gustafa, the chairman of the board. And the funny thing about that is, is that not only was it not a personal thing, and anybody who's worked with me knows that my whole, I think, compass of decision-making is like, "Don't put emotion into it, we have to go with facts," is that as, as recently as October or November of 23, when John and Russ Fiskin had a committee together that was working with Neat Walls on a business and operations plan to present to this town board in January with the proposed funding, which was gonna be seven hundred or eight hundred grand annually, okay? When it became apparent that Russ would become one of the leaders of Neat Walls, I said, "That, I'd do an Irish jig, that's enough leadership change for me." I said, "Leadership change needs to be done, organizational structure needs to be done." I already told you why. Leased staffing and the fly car model that, all you gotta do is look at the data and see how it is not the right model for a thirty-five square mile town with forty-five hundred ambulance calls a year that have pay-to-mex that are configured of a socioeconomic makeup of this town. It is not the model you do here, and if you research it, it is a rural area model. We are not a rural town. Forty-five thousand people in thirty-five square miles, it's not the model. But Neat Walls stood their ground, God bless them, "We're not changing, you can't tell us to get rid of, change our leadership, you can't tell us to change our organizational and operational structure." And that's what they stood up, and we tried to be very, "Look, we're not adverse to giving you money, but those things have to change." They never did. I gotta be honest with you, I did not expect that December 29th, that the Neat Walls leadership would take the posture of setting up a quick press conference and calling the press in and saying, "Hey, we quit, we're done." Ninety-day notice, which the contract has, and they executed it. And here we are ninety days later. And with that being said, whether it is to Mrs. Doctor's liking or not, how I answered that question, it was well over five minutes, wasn't it?
Thirteen minutes.
You can, we can have more conversation of this when you call Kim Doyle, and I'm sending you an email right now to set up a meeting one-on-one. Now, with that being said, does anybody on the town board have any questions or comments about the resolution that one of you will have to make a motion if we want to move forward with this, about outsourcing our EMS in the Northeast Joint Fire District to Penfield Volunteer Ambulance as of 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, because that is the formal end of the ninety-day notice of Northeast Quadrant Advanced Life Support? Is there any?
I think you did a fantastic job. The question I hear from you is this, um, because every time I hear you answer a question, you did the same thing at our committee meetings, "How can you remember those dates?" I just...
It's a sickness, to be honest with you, John. I mean, honestly?
It's impressive, Paul.
It's...
No notes in front of you, just ram them off.
I don't know how, yes, right.
Can I, can I, I really wasn't gonna speak, but can I, can I speak?
Yeah, we'll see, the open of the floor is still open. We haven't, you know what, we haven't gotten to this resolution, so go ahead, Brian, you get a two for tonight. You get the town engineer public hearing, and you also get the open of the public hearing.
Yes, again, so I, it's unfortunate she didn't leave, because I did want to say, you know, I have never come to town board meetings until this whole ambulance situation occurred. You know, you guys moved the location to high school because there were so many of us, and yes, we were not popular for giving it to, to WEMS instead of Penfield with West Webster back in the day, but it is what it is, and, and, you know, I think WEMS showed their true colors, and, you know, I, my last seven years at Xerox back in the day, when I worked at Xerox, was with the ambulance there, and that is where their, you know, Neat Walls started from, so I understand that model, and that model definitely is, works for Xerox back in the day, because employees are all working, so the volunteer ambulance at Xerox, so a fly car and an ambulance worked, but that, you're right, it does not work for the town, and I'm very happy that we are friendly with Penfield and again, Neat Walls. You guys have publicized this announcement, we've had so many, so many meetings on this, so many presentations extra that are up on the website, there's a whole section dedicated, so I'm not sure what, what she missed on that.
Again, everything.
Too bad that she didn't read them. Thank you.
Thanks. Right, the only other thing that I would add to this discussion is that this is not the road we originally wanted to go down. We worked very hard putting a business plan together to present to the EBS board, and it just didn't go in the right direction, but we, we did a lot of work at committee, and yourself, Tom, Paul, just in the concrete fruition. It's not something that we were designing to do to go this way. And, you know, this same committee will be working and doing analysis for the long-term contract with Penfield, so it's not like we're not following the same footprint.
Yeah, anyway, I would like to thank, you know, all those that involved in this process, and it was a very, very complicated issue because of the health and the safety of the Webster residents, you know, it's my number one concern, so I'm going to support this
So well, Tom and John are sorting that out. I'm sort of, I'm the newest member of the board, so late to the party, have certainly been following the EMS situation in the town, and I was at the, the meeting in June. It's an unfortunate situation, and it's very complicated, like Ginny said, it's extraordinarily complicated, and there are, there, there were differences of opinions, there are requirements from the state, there, there's just a lot that go into these decisions. The one question I had, which Paul helped to answer for me, was the funding for the Penfield ambulance, so inside the town budget, there's $50,000 for augmenting the ambulance service, or EMS service in Webster. The, the amount that is required to stand up Penfield Volunteer Ambulance is a little bit more, 128,000, I don't have the exact number.
Nine fifty-six.
Nine fifty-six.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. And so those were my questions, was where is that money gonna come from, and there is, there's, there are funds in the general fund to make up the difference, and as the town was going through this process, Penfield Volunteer Ambulance, in good faith, did take actions and incur cost to make sure that while this transition was happening in the west side of Webster and preparing for supporting the east side of Webster, made investments in the business to ensure that when this day comes, the, is it the 29th or 30th, what day is?
I think it's the end of today.
The end of today, because it was the 29th. So at the end of today... So at the end of today, tomorrow, we can guarantee that anybody, as Tom would say, in 35 square miles of Webster is going to have the critical care and emergency support that they need. So. And, and the other piece of this is, that was important to me because this was unfolding fairly quickly, is, well, if there was $50,000 in the budget, how's that going to be budgeted for in the future? And, and for that, as soon as this resolution is made, it's, it's good till the end of this year. And then there will be discussions in the budgeting process for this, for next year's budget. So we'll make sure it's comprehensive and, and provides good coverage and affordable cost for the town of Webster. So for, for those reasons, I think it's extraordinarily important to support this because there's, right now, it would be no other option after today.
To your point, we were not wanting that notification from NECALES. We immediately started meeting with Penfield. The Penfield has been, has been ramping up significantly since we first started working with them, knowing that this day was coming quickly. I believe to date, they've hired above at least 11 NECALES employees, paramedics and EMTs, and have been ramping them up, getting them onboarded. They've spent significant money on equipment. One of the ambulances that were retired or not retired, so they had to equip that. So they've expended quite a bit of money. And that's to the benefit of, of the town of Webster. And Glenn, thank you and your team for all your cooperation. And, you know, especially, it comes down to also people, right? There's a lot of young people that were going to be out of the job. And they have been hired not only by Penfield but by other ambulance corporations in Monroe County, which was, I was glad to hear that. And thank you for doing that. And I talked to, I don't want to name who it is, but I've been speaking on a regular basis regarding the environment at Penfield. Because we bring a lot of people in from a different ambulance company. Sometimes the transition isn't too smooth. You have a lot of different personalities, right? And I have heard nothing but positive things from this gentleman who I trust and respect about the transition from NECALES and how welcoming that Penfield has been. So I want to mention that and also thank you for that.
Thank you. And I will say that I really thought that by January of '24, based on the work that John was doing on this committee with Russ Diskin and some NECWA's board members leadership day-to-day, that we were going to have them come in and present the business plan, the operations, changes, whatever, and then the proposed funding that they would need from the town. And we were getting a glimpse of that as early as probably mid-November, Paul, early December, that it was, it was going to be $700,000.
Oh, yes.
And I want to say, $700,000 for the year of 2024, to just make ends meet. This was before we would have had to figure out what monies to help them with to, to update their fleet of transport ambulances. Their fleet of transport ambulances is old. The gurneys that come out of the back with the patient are manual. And, you know, I'll say a guy at my side. Brian, I won't pick on you. If you could easily tip me over. The modern ambulances have hydraulic gurneys so that the volunteer firefighters, EMTs, and the paramedics and EMTs that worked for the ambulance company are put in that position of potentially having to hold up somebody manually. The hydraulic gurney, it just makes sense. It's 2024. And that was something this, this board looked at and said, and I go back to the, you know, there's a fiduciary responsibility being on this board of the taxpayers. Money. But there's also just the compass of doing the right thing. That when you see that our citizens are potentially being transported to a hospital in a less than desirable aged and accoutremented transport ambulance, I just don't think that's right. That's where the balance of dollars and just doing the right thing, that tips. So we knew that if we were going to continue on at NECWA's, that we were going to have to invest. And I know, Paul, you had done some preliminary work to see if it was grant money and could be leased ambulances in our name and lease them back, you know? But, but an ambulance is, I don't know, 200 grand?
Not equipped with a lift or the power load or anything. $350 fully loaded.
$350,000 fully loaded. So we were trying to figure out, you know, well, how do we do that? Because we assumed we were going to be sitting with NECWA's in January, and that's who we were going to go with. I can't stress enough, I was blown away when they did the 90-day notice. But, you know, you're turning lemons into lemonades. The ambulances that Penfield Volunteer Ambulance has, they have a real strict policy on how old or how many miles. And they either get rid of them and buy new ones or they refurbish them. And they all, I think, Glenn, have the hydraulic, right? So not only is that good for the patient, but I guess, I'm kind of one of those guys. It's like, I think there's a respectable work condition for an EMT and a paramedic. And I don't think, I can't sleep it when I think of that we're going to be behind, our town board is behind, putting human beings that do this job, this thankless job that sometimes, for what they get paid, in a rig that is potentially dangerous. They deserve the respect of being in a more updated rig. Now, along those lines, and this was one that really bothered me since 2022, when NECWA's got the whole town, is I learned EMS and, whoa, have I gotten an education on EMS? It is one complicated industry. Very complicated. It, it, it just made sense to me that when you go down to a base of operations where the ambulance is pulled into a bay, and while they're not on call, they go in and there's a family room and couches and chairs, and they can maybe watch TV, and there's a kitchen, and then maybe they could, there's bedrooms and whatever. Because these people are putting in long hours. And so when they're not on call, if they're going to be waiting for the next call, it's kind of nice to be in a base like that. NECWA's had their base on Jackson Road. But then they said, "Don't worry about the people in West Webster because West Webster are over on DeWitt. That's a long ways from Jackson Road. So if they got to go to a heart attack on DeWitt Road from Jackson, that can take 10 minutes." And seconds matter in this industry, right? So it just made sense to me logistically that you got to triangulate or whatever where your bases of operations are in, within 35 square miles. You put yourself in the best position to draw a radius around these bases and say that every citizen in Webster, every resident, assuming all things are equal and you're not out on a call and whatever, the ambulance is four minutes away. And that's a big difference than 10 minutes away. Now, NECWA said, "Hey, we put our ambulances over and they just sit in a parking lot. So they're staged." Is that a great way to treat employees? That you're sitting in your ambulance in a parking lot at 2:00 in the morning, waiting for the next call? So that always bothered me, and I think it bothered you too, John. And one of the things we're, we're getting with Penfield Volunteer Ambulance, at least in this short-term contract, is that when they got their base on Jackson Road, it is less than three miles south of the NECWA's base. So it's still accessible quickly to some of the people in southeast Webster. But they've also worked out with the Northeast Joint Fire Department to stage base whatever one ambulance at the, what is it? The Phillips Road Station 3, which if you take Station 3, and it's over near our rec center or whatever, draw a circle around that, you've got some good coverage in east Webster there. But they also have an ambulance, I hope we're pointing right, yeah? They also have an ambulance or ambulances over at the West Webster Joint Fire District Base on gravel road. And I think everybody who knows Tiaqas in Webster knows that if you're off of DeWitt, having an ambulance come from gravel road's fire department, you got a heck of a lot better chance if you got an emergency situation of that, getting there quickly and saving your life on the way to the hospital than if it's coming from Jackson Road. So that made me feel pretty good. And it also gave a base where the EMTs and paramedics, when they're not on a call, have a place to go in, rest, grab a bite to eat, have coffee, maybe watch a TV show. I don't know why any of us would have any problems with that while they're not on a call. Because some of these, what are they working, sometimes 12-hour shifts?
We limit them to 18.
We limit it, limit it, limit them to 18 hours?
Yeah, most of them are 12-hour shifts.
18-hour shifts. And these people are doing God's work. I don't mean to be corny, but we owe it to them to at least try to give them good ambulances and to give them a good place to be while they're not on a call. And this is where, to me, this, this is great because Penfield has those things. So we're getting them in this contract. We were ready to do that with NECWA's, but it was going to, don't kid yourself, it was going to cost a lot more than $700,000 in 2024 because, John, we didn't have an answer beyond that 700 grand to how do we get their fleet of ambulances up to where they need to be with, you know, all the things that I've said. And we didn't have any inroads to where they could put an ambulance in West Webster that was respectful, respectful to the EMTs and paramedics. We, we didn't have an answer to that. Well, NECWA's basically given their 90-day notice, opened up the door to us getting the answer. And it's, right now, through Penfield Volunteer Ambulance. So I know there's a lot of emotion about this. I know that the, the, the nice lady who was here today is, you know, she's upset. There's a lot of people that are upset. It's an emotional thing. We had to really balance this emotion with just hard facts. Logistics, dollars, employee respect, ambulance age and accoutrements. Those are non-emotional things. Those are facts. Well, there is no public hearing.
We're going to open to the floor. You don't have to.
Anybody else want to get up there? Brian?
No, I'm good now.
So we're on the resolution. We've really dealt with it.
So I'll make a motion to authorize town supervisors, we sign a contract for West, Webster Emergency Medical Services from today through December 2024 to outsource EMS Penfield ambulance in the amount of $128,956.25.
Councilwoman Kayla?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wright?
Aye.
Supervisor Larry?
Aye.